Four. Twenty twenty four, and I'll start with roll call. Commissioner Andrews.
Present.
Commissioner Burgess. I know he's not able to make the meeting, so we'll just show that he's absent. Um, Commissioner Manzal.
Present.
Commissioner Perez. We will show him as absent. Um, Commissioner Trainer.
Present. Morning.
Morning. Um, so at this time, um, I'm going to call for a public comment. If there is any.
Commissioner Smith before. Um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith, um, the agenda, I know that the one that I got from the attorney on Friday. Included um, a possible executive session and some new business items. That was in the revised version in cheat sheet that I sent out on Friday. Did you wanna address those items?
Well, let me go to the cheat sheet real quick then, okay?
Sorry, I just wanna make sure that we.
No, you're fine. You're absolutely fine. I am going from the older one, so. That's me. Everything on my computer is big as well. Do you, okay. Can you just stick it in the chat? Or email me separately?
Is that, um? The cheat sheet?
Yeah.
Yep, give me a sec.
Thanks. Thank you. That would be a lot faster.
Send.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh. Three. Yes, we should go into executive session. So, the board will convene um, in executive session to evaluate complaints and charges brought against public officer or employee pursuant to the code. And review the performance of a public employee. Um, so it is twelve and three right now. Um, we shouldn't need more than ten minutes. So let's shoot for coming back at twelve thirteen.
Okay, and Commissioners, um. Commissioner George is in the conference room, right?
Oh, that, I couldn't see him in there.
So everyone in the conference room will need to leave and allow George that area.
Sorry to be, I don't mean to be rude, but sorry about that, guys.
Nope, that's though.
And then, um, Danina, before you leave, can you put the Colby office in the breakout room? I'm sending it out now.
Yeah. Um, so the board will now reconvene um, in public session, and I believe it's twelve fifteen. Um. And after taking no action in the executive session, we have some new business. Um. The board will now consider um, items. Um. And state, I'll tell you what those are. First one is the receipt and acceptance. Of the independent report on the investigation that was conducted um, regarding Major Galloway. And so, I will need a motion.
Okay, so I move to accept the receipt acceptance and acceptance of the inde-. Independent report on the investigation. Uh, concerning Major Galloway.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, any, um, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Now, is the um, Colby office on? Cause I couldn't hear George if he said anything or. Or, um, Paul.
Mr. Manzal is on mute.
Oh, okay, maybe that's why. Okay, just wanna make sure his vote was captured. Is it me that's missing it? It could just be me.
I don't know what you're referring to, Chair Smith.
Um, his vote, cause I didn't hear him hear him or George. And I don't wanna just assume that it was in favor.
Manzal, are you recording?
I think it said it was.
Yes. Yes, I am.
So George, are you in favor or against?
I can hear you.
Okay. And then, I'm going to.
Commissioner Manzal.
Yeah.
Sorry, it looks like um, he had turned off his.
Camera.
Camera and. If Commissioner Manzal, there should be a button on your screen asking you to unmute. If you could push that button.
He may be having. Some challenges.
Well, what we could do is, um, cause the second thing is a vote as well. Um. If he can't, if he's not heard on the second one, maybe we can go circle back and just let him say it formally on the record. Um. So the second item was um, regarding the information or action items in the report. Um, and then I would need a motion about that as well.
Yeah, Chair Smith, I moved uh, to the delegation of authority to the board chair where they're designated.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Oh, we need a second, we need a second.
Sorry. We'll get our stuff together.
I'll, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you hear, Commissioner?
Perez.
I can hear you.
Perez. We can now.
Yeah, we can hear you now. Thank you. So we will circle back to, um. Um. Commissioner Manzal, okay? Um, at this time. Uh. I had started to view the call for any public comment, and I hadn't heard any, but who knows, someone could be there. Um. Anyone for public comment? Nope. Okay, now we go to the communications. And first item is the report from the resident councils. Doesn't look like we have one today scheduled. And then I will call for any other communications, um. From senior staff. Not hearing anyone, or yes?
Nope. Nothing that's not further down on the agenda?
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Um, the next item is the executive director's report, um. I plan to come up with a formal, formal communication once we have some other things settled, but. As everyone knows, that um, Major's last day with the um, Housing Authority was the twenty ninth. Um, we are actively uh, pursuing with headhunters, uh. An interim for a year, executive director and an interim. Deputy. Director. And Major will be consulting for a period of four months, as outlined by his agreement, and we recognize the. Public comment section needs to happen, but we didn't have all the pieces, and the lawyer's working on that. As well. But that's really it for right now. Um. Number eight was individual, items for individual consideration. The first one was Resolution fifteen eighty seven, authorizing acquisition of Mariner Square property and related pre-development activities. And I'm gonna give the floor to Jason Morrow, Chief Real Estate Officer.
Okay, Board Chair, um, so this is uh, the same resolution um, that we took for the week before. Um, in particular, it. It relates to two items related to uh, this particular uh, acquisition. Intent, uh, one is the acquisition itself. Um, for which there is a base price of two point seven million dollars. Uh, which will be placed in escrow, escrow to execute the land transfer. And then the second part of the agreement, there's a target settlement date of June first two thousand twenty four. Um, which is a timeframe for which uh, we can um, work on the final compensation amount uh, with the seller. Uh, based on a negotiation, exchange, or appraisals uh, and like processes. Uh, should there not uh, be a agreed settlement, then we would move to mediation to finalize that pricing. Um, the second part of it uh, is an authorization for pre-development activities. And a budget authorization of five million dollars, which would um, take us from um, the acquisition through due diligence, and then through the. Uh. Pre-development phases, which would take us basically to a uh, final um, finance closing and a start of construction. Uh, the, the aim uh, would be to acquire this property, um, to work with Snow Isle uh, in a joint partnership. Um, for which uh, we'd be prepared to start uh, construction in two thousand and twenty six, should we be able to move forward. Uh, and meet uh, the critical path deadlines. Um. I know there were some questions last week, um, as relates to issues uh, relating to Duane Leonard's letter. Um, I hadn't received any further information on um, outcomes of any communications. Or any other information exchanges that may have occurred, which may have affected the board's position related to this, and so. Uh, I really don't have uh, any additional comments that aren't a regurgitation of what we discussed and what I stated last week. Um, but I wanted to open the floor for questions, answers, and/or comments uh, related to this transaction.
Thank you, Jason, I appreciate that. And so, yes, this has drawn. Um, some concern from the board, and plus we got a new communication shortly before this meeting, and um. Kinda had come into this meeting hoping to talk about. Um. A list of things to do prior to approval. Um, meetings that need to be had, and with who. And um, who the participant of those meetings should be. And I know that uh, John Trainer and Cynthia Andrews have come some.
I'll let you go first, Commissioner Trainer.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair Smith. Uh, Jason, I, I have just a couple questions regarding last week's, you know, interaction with you when we asked some questions. About communication with Hasko and. It. And I don't have like minutes from that meeting, I don't have uh, everything typed out, what was said, what wasn't said. Um, and I don't have access to the recording. But my understanding was that you said, and correct me where I'm in error, please, okay, cause I don't wanna get this wrong. That you had said that you had been in communication with Hasko. And. The letter we received just prior to this board meeting says that. That really didn't happen, there was one communication. So I, I'm just looking for clarity here, not in an accusatory way. I just trying to understand the difference between last week's meeting and the letter we received from Hasko.
I haven't uh, seen this letter we're speaking about. This second letter that I hear folks talking about, I haven't seen it, so. Uh, I can't comment on the contents of that letter, I'd love to see it. Um. I do know, um, I have read the prior letter, um, I think uh. Your comments are, are correct, in the sense that, um, as we discussed, um. Months ago, around six months ago, we had this discussion with Hasko, and we ended up concluding in a meeting with ourselves. Uh, meeting myself, Duane Leonard, as well as Lois Langer Thompson, who's the CEO or Executive Director of Snow Isle. Duane, I, and Lois came to a conclusion that. Duane and Hasko had no issues uh, with us moving forward. There were no concerns that he was communicating, the one concern he did communicate. Um, I am not comfortable with sharing with you in a public environment, but I'm happy to share um, in, in a different environment. Um, we have done our best to uh, assist Duane in that particular manner. And this letter, which we received last week, and apparently this new one, um. Our recent communications, which I'm fairly certain haven't taken place in the context of a discussion with Snow Isle. Um, who is the lead partner in this development. Um, who've been working on this for several years, and we're working on this from the foundation of being a development partner, so. Um. Your, your question about whether or not I've talked to Duane, I guess in the last week, the answer is no. I haven't. And I. I know I had received some communication um, from Chair Smith um, about her conversation um. With the Snow Isles chair, or with Executive Director uh, Lois Langer Thompson at Snow Isle. Uh, but other than that, I don't have any additional information on which communication has taken place, what the contents of that communication are between Hasko, Hasko's board, yourselves, or others. And so, the only new information I have this week that differs from last week is that we have an agreement signed and executed on the seller's behalf. Um, to move forward with this transaction, and so I was coming today uh, to request authorization. Uh, to follow through on the seller's request that we sign, execute immediately, so that we can move forward with the transaction in alignment with Snow Isle's. Uh, needs and best interests. And.
So for me, I think it's important that we continue the conversation. I'd love to have a conversation with Jason. And the board, as well as pursuing the conversation with Hasko's board uh, before we move forward.
Um. Was that? Was that it?
Chair Smith, can you?
Believe it or not, that's all. Okay. So, um, part of what I was thinking today is like. Number one, Jason, we need to understand the pitfalls of um, stalling the approval. Right? And then, um. Figure out who's gonna be in these meetings and who we need to meet with. Jason, you're number one on the list. Um, and finding times that we can do it this week. So. Cynthia and John. I mean, I know if we all meet, it's a, it's a. It's a public meeting, right? We're a forum, so we need to figure out who the people are that are gonna have the conversation. So I'd like to know who on the board would like to volunteer to have these conversations.
Chair, Chair Smith, if it's this week, I cannot attend it.
Okay. Okay. Maybe Jason, could you share, um. Uh. What could happen with the delay? That would be very helpful.
We could pull away from the transaction, and we would no longer have a development project for Snow Isle to move forward with their letter. I mean fundamentally, the risk is. Fundamentally, the risk is something we don't control, which is the seller's behavior.
And the seller is not. Flexible to give us another week? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, I'm, I'm not necessarily suggesting they wanted or couldn't be, it's just usually in these transactions, we try to execute them as soon as possible because we don't know. What's next. So I, I think it's possible, I just can't give you affirmative, one way or the other.
Anything else that you can think of, Jason? It's a lot right there, right? Okay.
Can I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith, I'm having a really hard time hearing you, your microphone, am I the only one?
No, you keep feeding it now.
Yeah, it's me too.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, I just will be, look very eager.
Thank you.
Alright, so it sounds like, okay, I have a question, and it normally would ask Chris. So, um. Would it be another public meeting um, to approve this initiative, if we could get the meeting scheduled ASAP? Does anyone know?
So I was just gonna, what were you, you were asking about scheduling another meeting?
Um, so is there a way to, to have these meetings scheduled? For early this meet, this week? But then to get the resolution pushed forward? Um, would it be, would it take another public meeting to get it approved?
Um, can I say one thing, though, that, um. Uh, Attorney DeJulio told me about a different matter that may apply here. Is that the board can agree to delegate authority to a smaller group to make a decision?
Okay.
But I don't know how you would do that, that's just what.
A smaller group as in what?
As in like the real estate committee or somebody on your board?
But I think they would still have to bring the power, the power of meetings back to the full board, the full board would have to act, the smaller board is not empowered to act.
My understanding is that the board today, I, I mean, I, I hate to say this because I, it's probably not great, but. Um, the board today could say, we delegate this power to this smaller group, and we will, uh.
But you'd have to approve the transaction.
We will approve that decision of the smaller group. But I mean, that's something that I.
I don't know that it would be, that we would be able to do that, because I think there's some OPMA issues associated with, you know, taking action in a open meeting, et cetera, related to.
Yeah, what, uh, Mr. DeJulio told me was the action would be in this meeting.
Right, so the board would have to be comfortable.
Right, exactly, that's, sorry, I'm just mentioning that because I've been told that before, not because I'm an expert.
And we, we being, uh, E H A, in a position where we have, we have to make a decision. Right now?
Usually, this is the way that it works.
Okay, okay, I know.
And so, yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just saying that it's, it's hard for me to answer in the affirmative or negative, one way or the other. Because I don't know what the seller's behavior will be over the next, I don't know, and we'll talk to the seller. I don't know how scared the seller will be to hear that there are potential conflicts of issues between ourselves and Hasko as well. There's a whole lot of variety of things which we are discussing today, which are pertinent to ourselves and Hasko. But there are also a wide variety of issues that are very pertinent to the seller, and their, how they assess this. And so I don't, I don't know any of those, I also don't know if that just raises the pricing. Um, because they will consider this more risk on their side of the fence. And I also don't know to the degree to which this causes issues with Snow Isle. I know this will concern them, that we're not able to move forward with this transaction, um, but that's not to say that we couldn't take more time to assess. Just think these are all factors of risk and factors.
Chair Smith, you have had conversation with. Snow Isle. Correct.
And I did share with them, um. Our intent to move forward, but to build community relationships, oh, I didn't go forward. Um, I did, and it was a positive conversation, and. Um, I did mention that it wasn't that we were trying to pull out, we're trying to have appropriate um, community relationships in place. Um. And just taking the due diligence to build it, something like that is that. And she seemed fine, but. You know. But that doesn't, but that's, that's not the seller. So. She said the reason why, um, Everett Housing Authority got. Um. The partnership was because the responsiveness. And, um, it's, they were, Jason was excited, so, and they weren't getting that from Hasko. So. I guess rather than spin our wheels.
I think the sooner we can meet, the better.
Yeah, so. Um. It would be ideal if we could meet later on this afternoon. Because it's just Hasko that we need to meet with, correct? And Jason? And Jason, we wanna, on a Zoom meeting.
We can meet with Hasko, we can do it all on Zoom if that's easier. But I think it's important, um, that we, you know, establish, you know, we start with. Being good neighbors and making sure that we are all. Um, on the same page, because we have to live together and grow together, and I think this is a wonderful project, I just think we need to do it the right way.
Okay. So can we agree to, um, can you reach out to Hasko? And see if they're available for later on this afternoon? Are you?
I can do that, I, I will.
And I know John Trainer's not available, um. Uh, Commissioner Perez, are you available to take a Zoom call? Or a Zoom.
So you're, you're proposing not a forum to me, correct?
Correct. And I know Chip did talk to, um. Sorry, Commissioner Burgess, talked to, um, oh my gosh. Craig Stockdale, cause that was. Stockdale, right? Cause he had made some public comments as well. Jason, we can talk some more about that.
That's a devil. Harrison, the other, the other letter that was received is about a different matter, it's not about this project. The Scott Dole letter.
Okay, my fault.
Yeah, Scott, the Scott Dole letter is very specific to the Park District.
I have thoughts on that letter, but we'll share it another time.
I'd love to have that conversation.
Let's, let's do that, Jason.
Jason, do you have some time later on this afternoon, um, to?
I will be, we'll make whatever time is needed, you know, from my perspective, I want. I need to get clarity, um, so that I can communicate to all of our partners, um, which also actually includes Duane at Hasko. Um, I suppose I have a question in this intended meeting, um, is this uh, amongst whom? Is this board members, or is this including Snow Isle? Um, because I feel a little bit uncomfortable having this conversation without Snow Isle in the room. Because it's very specific to Snow Isle. And I'm not willing obviously to attend any meeting, I'm just asking the question of what the intent and who's gonna be in it.
And that would be board members without a forum, right?
Correct. Correct, that's why I'm saying if either you or Commissioner Manzel was available. Later on this afternoon.
Sorry, I haven't logged into what I'm saying.
Yeah. So.
What's up Chair, Chair Smith, what time is, what time are you proposing cuz I might be able to make it work if you need a third person there.
Four P M?
Perfect.
Cynthia, I don't know what your schedule looks like then.
I can move something to make for work.
Because maybe Jason, to answer your question, I was only suggesting yourself. Um, if John can make it Cynthia, myself or either myself or George, whoever is available. Just to kind of talk through things and then understand.
Right. Internal to ourselves.
Yes. I don't know if you're comfortable with that or not, so.
Oh, I'm very, I I'm comfortable, I just was trying to raise the subject of if we were having a larger discussion. With Hasko.
That one we hope to do right after.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll make myself available at any time.
Are you saying that if you're gonna be part of a conversation with Hasko, you think that the um Snow Isle should be there too?
Absolutely, I think so.
Okay, okay, good.
They're, they're, they're the ones who who created this. Deal, it's their narrative, their concept. And they're the ones who have a history much longer than ours. And this is also very specific to Hasko's interpretation of their involvement and our involvement. And ours and Snow Isle's, and so I think it's very important that all parties are in the room so there can be an open, transparent discussion.
Okay.
Chair Smith, I I also think that um. Part of the conversation is about the property, but I think there's another conversation about our relationship with Hasko. And our relationship in the community. In general, but our relationship with Hasko and and moving that piece forward, so.
Definitely, and we don't have an executive director right now, so um that. Part of like what they would be doing, so. Yeah.
Yes.
Noted, okay, so.
Thank.
Um, I guess to wrap it all up, we're gonna try to get those meetings um done today. So I know that in the past we have continued meetings before. Is it makes sense, so um we just continue this meeting. Quickly, um later via Zoom. Um, so we can have some sort of. Decision. On this.
Chair Smith, does that, doesn't? Does that still require the 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 notification process if we do that? So if we did it tomorrow, for instance, it'd have to be like a twenty-four hour notice posted on the window or whatever?
Yeah, and I think that um we don't have to redo the agenda just that we're resuming it, is that correct? Well, Junior, you might know. Cuz you helped with the agenda this time.
I mean, I don't, I don't really see, to me, it doesn't matter whether we continue the meeting or just do a new meeting. With that being the one matter that's on the agenda, as long as we do this in my first notice.
Okay, so um. Then let's not do a continuation because we don't know if um Hasko will have the ability to meet with us today, so. We'll just have to um go after our meeting and figure it out, make sure we have twenty-four hours notice. Um to post it again. And it should be brief. Like it would be the only agenda, really.
Okay, so would it be helpful if someone were to make a motion, Chair Smith? To postpone deciding this till a meeting tomorrow at, say, two o'clock?
That would be helpful.
Is that plenty of time?
No, cuz we'd have to have things by two o'clock today. Posted.
Okay, so what time tomorrow?
You can all come on the meeting and go into the agenda and put it on the door if you need to, I guess I just need to make sure that all the commission, that we have a form of commissioners for the meeting. So two P M works for commissioners and I'll make that happen with the agenda, that's fine. But I just wanna make sure that that time works for commissioners to, so that we have at least four commissioners present, that forum.
I, I can't make tomorrow work, I I can't make tomorrow work until after three.
What about four?
Four works for me.
Does that work for you, Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
And then what, sorry Chair Smith, I just wanna make sure I make the motion right.
You're fine, you're fine.
Um. So it's like four good, like, or four is alright, what about for uh? Uh Commissioner Perez? Okay, so uh Chair Smith, I'd like to make a motion that we delay deciding this and have a special meeting tomorrow at four o'clock to decide this and this only.
Okay. Um.
Second.
Okay, thank you, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did George say anything?
George, can we check on Commissioner Manzel, is there someone that can? Phone him or? Something, I'm just a little concerned now.
Yeah, cuz he hasn't responded.
Just to make sure he's alright, that things are. Yeah.
I sent him a text.
Good.
Okay. Alrighty, so we have um an outcome that we will be moving forward on fifteen eighty-seven with another meeting. The second item was resolution number fifteen. Oh, hang on, I'm on the wrong space, yeah, fifteen, okay, fifteen eighty-nine, delegation of authority. Am I reading the wrong thing?
So Chair Smith, um I had, because it was an item for individual consideration with a resolution, I had put it on, under the items for individual consideration. But technically you all already booked it on it earlier in the meeting, um so I think we can move on.
Okay, thank you. Next thing is this policy discussion. A financial update by um Chief Financial Officer Wendy Blaine, please.
Do you wanna mention about, do you want me to talk about how we're gonna make it an appropriate instead of the?
Sure, I will, I will mention it, hello everyone, thank you, um this was placed. I I sent y'all an email earlier that has. The documents with the financial statements in them. And as part of that email, I mentioned that this does need to be, it doesn't require a resolution, but just like an approval of the financial statements. So um so I'm gonna start with number one on the left. Item number one, which is the tax credit partnerships summary. So this is a. Financial statement for the tax credit partnerships, uh you guys, you all, excuse me, commissioners. Will remember that um these properties have a fiscal year end of December thirty-first. These properties and our nonprofit properties all have that fiscal year end of December thirty-first. So these properties are in the middle of their audits right now, um so. You know, technically, any of this information could change, however, I feel pretty good. About, you know, the accuracy of it, everything's been submitted to the auditors. I met with the finance committee on Friday and we went over this, so I'll try to keep this brief. And just focus on. The items at the beginning, um. The first column is a summary of the tax credit properties, I apologize for the way it, the the headers look, I apparently didn't neaten them up. Um, and just. Remember down at the bottom that we look at the adjusted net cash flow. These are the properties that have what we call the waterfall. So cash flow that comes out of these properties gets paid to Everett Housing Authority in the following year. Depending on all these different rules and and um agreements which are different for each of these seven partnerships. So down at the bottom, you'll see that we have that item that that says add back two thousand twenty-two net cash flow items. Paid in two thousand twenty-three, so that's a timing adjustment where in two thousand twenty-three, we received. One point six million dollars from these partnerships, and so. Right now, the adjusted net cash flow at the bottom with that is showing one point four five million that we expect. To get from these partnerships and that will be paid to Everett Housing Authority after. The audits are complete, so hopefully later this month. We had budgeted to to receive two point two million, um. Most of the reason why we're not receiving that is because of um the late. Being placing legacy or Madrona Square in service late, we had budgeted to have them operating. I think most of twenty twenty-three, but they didn't start operating until later. After we expected, you know, after we had expected them to be placed in services, so we did not have the revenue. Uh from that property that we had, we had expected to have. It's somewhat of a timing issue, we will still, we still expect to get paid our developer fee from that property. Just not when we had hoped, cuz we have to go through. All of the process to get what's called a cost certification done and all these other milestones have to be met. Before we can collect that money from them, from from that property and, you know, this is kind of all tangled up also in the um. Construction company, the lien they filed and we can't complete everything until all of that is resolved. So um. So that's a majority of the reason why we did not meet our expected net cash flow. There were also a couple other properties that, you know, struggled, but actually, the one that struggles the most is Bakerview Grand View. And I think maybe you'll remember that last year we got hit with some really unexpected last tenant costs. Which really impacted the net cash flow from that property this year. Things are looking a little bit better because we knew we were gonna get those big insurance charges that we. Got last year, we also didn't have to put a bunch of cash in our insurance escrow like we did last year. So I'm encouraged, um we still have a ways to go to make Bakerview Grand View. Uh. You know, pay its own bills, and that's something that we're gonna have to look at in the future, is how are we going to um handle that? And I spoke to the finance committee about that on Friday, if anyone has any questions, just let me know. But it's sort of an ongoing issue with these properties, we always are looking at what's gonna happen in five years from now when they leave. They exit their partnership, their tax credit partnership, because it's a limited time partnership. So we're always looking at that kind of. Situation. Are there any questions about the tax credit properties? No, um so now we can move on to the. Next tab, which is the nonprofit two O twos. You will probably remember that these are the properties, we have. These nine properties have all undergone their conversion under RAD for PrAC. Guys, remember, hopefully you'll remember that um. That whole process that we have gone through, for some of these properties, they were operating as E H A nonprofits the entire year. There are a few of them that were still being converted during this fiscal year. Um, so they have some additional expenses. Associated with the conversion, so uh if you scroll down, I don't know if you can put a, a. Split, oh, she took the split in, thank you, you'll see at the bottom, there is a net cash flow calculation. And what we attempt to do is we are allowed to um. Bring cash off these properties similarly to the way we bring cash off the tax credit properties to help pay. Overhead costs and, you know, costs of running the authority. For the properties that we've already done that calculation, we leave a thousand dollar net cash flow in there. For some of them, there's still some calculations happening, and you'll see in the second property, Scrivver Point. I made an adjustment at the bottom, I don't have the most current, yeah, to be played by, to be paid by replacement reserves. Sixty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, um. So some of these properties have non-operating items. That we are going to be removing cash from replacement reserves to pay for those. So these are also being updated um as we go through the audit, unfortunately, it looks like. I did not. I thought I sent you the most recent version, all of that has been estimated. Um, the properties that have negative, that look like they have negative net cash flow, most of them will have positive net cash flow. Once we take the money out of what's the replacement reserves to pay those capital improvement items. So I will, I have adjusted this and apparently did not send you. The most recent version of this, even though I checked about three times to see that I did. Uh, so, long story short, I don't have any concerns about these properties, I feel like especially next year because. The amounts that we had to pay for to HUD, two of these properties, we had to pay HUD. Um, back what's called replacement or residual receipts to them, we had to make big payments to HUD in order to take them over. And we won't have to do that next year. Uh, so. I feel, I also feel good about how these properties are operating. Are there any questions about the nonprofits? No, okay, the next tab is the.
I would like, I would like. I would like to get the current, most recent report sent to us.
We'll send that out, I will, I apologize, I thought I had sent it and clearly I sent the same one twice, so I will send the updated version to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so the E H, anything else? Okay. So the E H A properties are on the next tab, and those are the properties that are wholly owned by Everett Housing Authority. This is for the first six months of operations in this fiscal year. It includes Pacific Square, Pepperwood, Lakeview Terrace, Evergreen cottages, Royal Oaks. And Huntington Park, which is the new giant property that we bought. Last year. Looking at Jason, about eighteen months ago. Uh Huntington, Huntington Park is managed by Gray Star. Not by Everett Housing Authority and the numbers that I have inputted in input into this. Uh come from Gray Star. Um. We will, we always review those, those numbers, and we will ask them if we find any corrections that need to happen. We will ask them to do that. Um, one of the things that's not showing in here is the second debt payment for the year, the debt payments are made on July first and. June first, I believe, so since this cut off on June thirtieth. July first and January first, sorry, it doesn't show that item on here, it will be, it'll, it'll be included in the next quarter. Um, I think y'all remember that uh we expect to sell some of these properties. That we've been planning for a while to sell them. Uh Lakeview Terrace, Pacific Square and Royal Oaks are all three properties, they're, they're small, they don't have economies of scale. And Kristen and her team are looking into what it's gonna take to sell Lakeview Terrace and Pacific Square. We have to have agreements with our funders to sell those. Royal Oaks can be sold by E H A, that's the property that you may remember, we had some issues with. Last. Year in which there was someone squatting in one of the garages who attacked one of our maintenance workers. At the current time, we are planning to do some. Housekeeping and cosmetic repairs to that property and then place it on the, on the market. I'm not exactly sure when the asset management team is gonna do that, I think they're awaiting, you know. Instruction from potentially the next interim executive director to discuss the situation with them.
We are actively looking to sell.
We are, and that one we can sell without getting agreement from. Uh the city, the county, or other funders, because we own that outright, and there's no income restrictions on it, and there's no subsidies associated with it. Um. So. The. Issue with. These properties as a whole has been Huntington Park. Huntington Park is struggling to. Be be fully leased and we've been in conversation with Gray Star about that and working with them to. Come up with solutions. For getting their vacancies down. But I'm not, again, I think it's a learning process because it's a new property to us and we haven't operated a market rate. Great property before. In that way, so uh our asset management team is working closely with them. Are there any questions? Oh, the one other comment that I need to make is that for Lakeview Terrace down near the bottom. There's a comment that says adjust for transfer one point four million. We are, that is not a. Uh, cash item. What has happened there is several years ago in two thousand twelve, the housing authority paid off their mortgage. What Lakeview Terrace's mortgage and the money has sort of been sitting there growing in that property, but it doesn't. Belong to the property itself, it belongs to the agency itself. So we've made this transfer in order to minimize confusion. The the cash has just been taken out of the Lakeview Terrace bank account, put into the Everett Housing Authority bank account and it's noted there. Just trying to do some cleanup before we get ready to sell. Make sure that everything makes sense.
Yeah, I asked a question.
Absolutely.
Of course, understand that uh I am, I will, my fellow commissioner, totally understand the. Selling and purchasing a property under the need. So we are. We, EHA, own the business of. Why are we getting rid of, why are we selling?
That's a great question. These are tiny properties. Pacific Square has. Uh, can't remember how many units. No, I think it has eight maybe units. And Lakeview Terrace has like twenty-two units. We do not have, it doesn't have the scale. To allow us to have onsite property management, so it creates challenges for us. We can sell, if we sell Royal Oaks and we get three million dollars. That we can put that money into another larger tax credit deal like. We did for Madrona Square, we can get a hundred and five units instead of sixteen units.
True.
And it will be easier to operate and manage. So it's, it's an issue of scale and leverage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I have a poll of questions. Yeah, hi, um, I think I asked.
I have a question.
I think I asked this last year um about the same topic about these properties and and you know, you you explained it. I think it was last year, I I the, all these meetings, I I it's hard to track, but. When at these units are occupied, like these folks aren't just, if it's properties changing hands, aren't just being thrown on the street, right? Like there's.
No, there's, there's rules about that. I don't honestly know what they are, Commissioner Trainer, but I know that is definitely part of the. Whole process of selling. Unfortunately, I'm just the numbers person and I don't know all that, but when. Vacated Baker Heights and we vacated other properties, we relocated those folks.
Right.
So I don't know exactly what would happen, but no, we definitely don't want people out on the street. That's not our.
Yeah, I didn't figure, thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Other questions?
Yes, I have one. Um, I remember John Forsyth sharing with us that there was a challenge um. With um Broadway Plaza and the. Vermin rats that were there and they were having a challenge. Cleaning that up in the neighborhood between the hotel and the senior center. And Broadway Plaza, and I haven't heard anything from it. From us, but I did speak with the um director of the senior center and there still seems to be some. Friends lurking about the neighborhood. And wanted to know if we were, how we were doing with our Broadway Plaza facility.
I will ask, oh, do you want to respond to that, Jason? Yeah, so, so I will bring that up with Cal Poyar. Are you there, Cal? Can you respond?
Yes, I'm here. Um. Yeah, so I'm aware of the um infestation problem that we have at Broadway Plaza. We have been treating it. I was on site last week on Thursday and didn't receive any complaints or see anything while I was there. Uh, but I will follow up with the site staff, the property manager, uh make sure that we are still doing treatments. Uh, the other vermin problem there has been eliminated, um which primarily related to roaches and bedbugs. Um, so we are still working on the the rat problem, um but have. Uh, a plan in in place to attack that. I'll get better information from the site staff and be prepared to report up by our next meeting.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Cal.
Of course. Everyone's favorite subject, vermin.
Well, I appreciate that you're here because I know the numbers, but I don't know the, you know, all of the. Property operations information, so. Are there any other questions? Okay, so the final tab. Is the uh EHA supporting programs. And these are, this includes um. Hang on, I'm trying to get over that on my computer. This includes like. The central office, cost center, property management, property development, grant programs. And then on the far right are HCV programs. That it only shows the administrative portion of those programs. It does not show the half because the half. We get money in and it goes out to pay our clients. So this is just the administrative part of that, of those programs. What is not included here is Baker Heights, which we. Which is technically still a public housing property, but you will remember it's vacant. Um, that's the property that that has all the vacated units that we are trying to work with HUD to be able to buy it. Technically HUD still has a declaration of trust on that property. And while we are tasked with. Operating it in a sense of the word, we do not own it yet. So that property. Baker Heights is not included here, but I'm just gonna say that there are costs associated with it. Those costs are covered. Currently by the reserves that we have from when it was a public housing property. So so far this year, we've spent like. About a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars operating that property. And that includes things like security, um some uh utilities, groundskeeping. Cause we still have to keep, you know, keep the grounds up. Uh, but those are, those costs are also all covered by the reserve, so it's kind of a. Zero sum game there. Until we own it and once we purchase it from HUD, then it will become part of the housing authorities. You know, central, it'll be part of this supporting program document. So the supporting programs. Um. You'll remember that a lot of the net cash flow or the, the money that comes into this comes from the waterfall. From the tax credit partnerships. It comes from management fees and incentive management fees. From um. From the two oh twos and other properties. And this pays for the operation, you know, IT, HR, finance. Uh, this building, the the Holby Building. Um, and those kinds of things. Right now we have negative net cash flow. We always. Almost always expect to have negative net cash flow. That should improve when we collect the developer fee. When the legacy Madrona Square, you know, matter is settled. So that's again a timing issue. I believe we are expecting to get about one point four million dollars. In a developer fee payment from that property this year. And when I say this year, I mean our fiscal year ending June thirtieth. Um, but we will see what happens with the uh challenge from the, from the contractor and. And the things that are, you know, those kinds of things hold that up. So they owe us that money. We just haven't been able to collect it yet. And when I say they, I mean the partnership. So, um. Are there any questions about this? It's been a very unusual year, as I'm sure you can imagine. Um. Our ex, you know, our revenue is down, but our expenses are also down. Part of the reason our expenses are down is because we are short-staffed. And we've talked about this before, that's, it's great that our expenses are low, but it's not so great that we don't have employees to do a lot of this really important. And necessary work. And I know the HR department is working hard. Um, with all the other departments to get more fully staffed.
Any more questions?
Yes.
Any more questions? Doesn't look, doesn't look like it.
Thank you, everyone. If you have any questions after the meeting, please feel free to email me and I will get that updated. Two oh two report out to you, nonprofit report out to you. What's that? That's a probably thousand, so.
Thank you very much, Wendy.
Um, sorry. So we need to ask the board to just approve the financial statements. It's not a resolution or anything. I think it's just called approval. I wish Chris was here. He could explain it better than I can.
Yeah, so also I think, yeah, so what we, what we're looking for from the board is. Um. Um, I think we need to add this to the agenda or modify the agenda to make clear that we are. Uh, asking the board to approve the financial statements um for the period ending with December thirty-first.
Yeah.
Um, and then we need a motion from the, so two motions. The first is to amend the agenda to add this and then the second would be. To vote on the agenda.
Do I have someone that is willing to?
I have thoughts on that. I, I, I don't think we need to amend the agenda because we never like voted to adopt it, so um. We could just make a motion to approve that report and I think that should be, should be fine. Does anybody see any reason with that? You, you and the, the staff in the room?
You're listening.
Okay.
Hey, do I have a motion?
Move to adopt the report. Accept report.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, any approve, uh against? Okay. And then do I have a motion um for the second one? Oh, no, we're only doing the one, we're only doing the one, right? John, you're on um mute if you were talking.
Sorry, I can't hear anything you just said.
We were just, we're just doing the one. Um, approval, right?
Right. Unless there was another one.
Okay, let's move on to the, looks like almost the last topic. Office re, office reopening and um we were gonna reopen the discussion um. Kind of have a list of what the board. And I have talked about um just a couple of things and then I know there's some commentary on it. Um. Um. Cynthia's been added. Got added to the list and hope, or the team that's working on the reopening. And hoping to see a priority list um. Um, suggested. Uh, more frequent working meetings to um approach the April first date. Um. I'll get a list of items that need to be complete and then not worry about everything being perfect. But include forward movement towards opening up the doors and getting. To the formalized plan, but actually getting doors open. And then hiring of a security guard. So there was lots of commentaries, Cynthia, I know you have um a lot to say on this. So I will open. Up for your comments.
So I, I jumped the gun and I was trying to attend a meeting last week, but it's actually this week. So I will be attending and I will. Take the list that the board has developed to the meeting to make sure that we can address. These issues um and that the staff knows what is expected. Um. I will, but I would love to ask, I would love to get the presentation that you all gave last on the twenty-sixth meeting. Um, just so that I can continue with the background, understanding the background of what's happening. But I am, um, I am hearing things in the community, so I'm really excited to get us back in the office and uh. Get folks.
If you have any information that you can share now, that would be helpful for me so that when I. When I.
I can, absolutely, I can, I can send this list to you. Who, wait, who's me? Sorry, who's me? Who's speaking? I'm sorry?
Janina, Janina, I'm leading the work group.
Janina, okay. Okay, great. Yes, I can, I can send this list to you, so you'll be prepared. Absolutely.
Can I interrupt just one moment? Commissioners, I sent that updated financial statement to you and I believe it's the same one that I sent you earlier. I just didn't get that to Janina and Heather to put up on the screen, so you should already have it and I just sent it again.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One, three, two, one.
Or two times.
Yeah. So uh in regards to the reopening, was there any other board commentary? Okay, hearing none. I think that we have concluded most of, well, everything on the list. So at this time, um. We're going to um adjourn the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's on the list, but I also want to just. Let the board members know that. The co, the planning commission are meeting tomorrow. And they are, um, they have been discussing the park district project and so wanted to encourage our board members. To attend that meeting tomorrow. I know Jason has been instrumental in those meetings. But there's also public comment that's happening and I think that we should be. There to also make public comment.
Um, Commissioners, if you do end up attending, I guess I would just caution you to be aware of potential open meeting act. Confederations or. Thank you.
What is it? I'm sorry. We can't.
Oh, um. Uh, if there's forum or commissioners present, it could create the uh appearance that there is a EHA board meeting occurring, so. Um, if that's the case, then I, you know, I just wanted to raise that for everyone's uh awareness that forum commissioners constitute the forum.
Thank you. We will coordinate then.
Thanks, Janina. So, um, the next regularly scheduled board meeting. Isn't until um. Later on this month, right? No, yeah, later on this month. Um, but it looks like we're going to have a very quick meeting tomorrow for. Um, so that means that puts, puts um the conversations we need to have with Pascal and Jason. Um, to the forefront what we're doing so we can meet the um deadline of the public. Meeting announcement. Um, so if there's no further business to discuss, I'd like to call for a vote to adjourn today's regular meeting.
Move to adjourn.
I have a second.
Second.
We're officially adjourned.
Why are you laughing? Okay.
That's the fastest motion ever, move to adjourn.
Sees what?
Oprah Winfrey in the bottom left. It might be one of the senior.
Bottom left, bottom left.
You mean.
Does she have her checkbook? George, does she have a checkbook?